Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the City Commission this February 4th, 2025. Thank you all for being here today. We have some special announcements a little later, and a lot of people were here to recognize. But those of you who are here for the first time, let me welcome you and let you know that we begin our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance and certain announcements and any changes to the minutes in the agenda. And then we go right into our presentations. So tonight, we will do our Pledge of Allegiance, and I would like to invite Morgan Penrow of Gateway Christian Academy. Morgan, is Morgan here? Morgan? I guess not. So may I ask you all to please rise and join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. All right, get back up. How are you?
Good.
I'm Dean. Nice to meet you. Okay, so all these people are standing for you. Oh, who is this?
My sister.
What's her name?
Destiny.
What is it?
Destiny.
Destiny. So we have Morgan and Destiny. Are you both going to join in and say the pledge? Say yes. All right, put your right hand over your heart, and you can begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wonderful. Now, this is going to be a share, so we thank you for coming here today. And before you leave, Commissioner, we're going to have a little picture taken. Can I ask you to turn around?
Right here?
Right there. Destiny, come over here. This is Commissioner Beasley Pittman. She's going to join us. Okay.
All right. Beautiful smile. Thank you.
Modern family. Also, I'd like you to join me in this moment of silence. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Present.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Here.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Here.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Here.
We have full attendance. We have a couple of agenda announcements. We have a walk-on motion. This is a motion approving an outdoor event agreement and request for music exemption with 1134 LLC for Smitty's Super Bowl Sunday Watch Party. Place to be. And then we have OFR 1 is going to be removed from the agenda. We have some changes to the minutes. January 7, 2025, page 9, last paragraph was revised to replace "this" neighbor with "the neighborhood." And CM 7, we correct the district. It's supposed to be District 4. And CR 2, letter F of the CAM, correct. District is again District 4. So...
That's not true. Let's see the other one. District 2.
I'm sorry for interrupting. I felt they weren't both for. One of them said for it and needed to be 2.
CM 7 should have changed from 4 to 2, and then there was one item on the budget amendment.
But that's not what the mayor just read, so I just want to make sure.
And it was Item F, and it was 2, and it should have changed to 4.
Okay, so CM 7, the correct district should be District 2.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. Someone like to move the agenda as amended and the minutes as amended?
Moved.
Seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Here. Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Here.
Mayor Trump House?
Here.
We have full attendance. We have a couple of agenda announcements. We have a walk-on motion. This is a motion approving an outdoor event agreement and request for music exemption with 1134 LLC for Smitty's Super Bowl Sunday Watch Party. Place to be. And then we have OFR 1 is going to be removed from the agenda. We have some changes to the minutes. January 7, 2025, page 9, last paragraph was revised to replace "this" neighbor with "the neighborhood." And CM 7, we correct the district. It's supposed to be District 4. And CR 2, letter F of the CAM, correct. District is again District 4. So...
That's not true. Let's see the other one. District 2. I'm sorry for interrupting. I felt they weren't both for. One of them said for it and needed to be 2.
CM 7 should have changed from 4 to 2, and then there was one item on the budget amendment.
But that's not what the mayor just read, so I just want to make sure.
And it was Item F, and it was 2, and it should have changed to 4.
Okay, so CM 7, the correct district should be District 2.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. Someone like to move the agenda as amended and the minutes as amended?
Moved.
Moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Here. Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Here.
Mayor Trump House?
Here.
We have full attendance. We have a couple of agenda announcements. We have a walk-on motion. This is a motion approving an outdoor event agreement and request for music exemption with 1134 LLC for Smitty's Super Bowl Sunday Watch Party. Place to be. And then we have OFR 1 is going to be removed from the agenda. We have some changes to the minutes. January 7, 2025, page 9, last paragraph was revised to replace "this" neighbor with "the neighborhood." And CM 7, we correct the district. It's supposed to be District 4. And CR 2, letter F of the CAM, correct. District is again District 4. So...
That's not true. Let's see the other one. District 2. I'm sorry for interrupting. I felt they weren't both for. One of them said for it and needed to be 2.
CM 7 should have changed from 4 to 2, and then there was one item on the budget amendment.
But that's not what the mayor just read, so I just want to make sure.
And it was Item F, and it was 2, and it should have changed to 4.
Okay, so CM 7, the correct district should be District 2.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. Someone like to move the agenda as amended and the minutes as amended?
Moved.
Moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Here. Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Here.
Mayor Trump House?
Here.
We have full attendance. We have a couple of agenda announcements. We have a walk-on motion. This is a motion approving an outdoor event agreement and request for music exemption with 1134 LLC for Smitty's Super Bowl Sunday Watch Party. Place to be. And then we have OFR 1 is going to be removed from the agenda. We have some changes to the minutes. January 7, 2025, page 9, last paragraph was revised to replace "this" neighbor with "the neighborhood." And CM 7, we correct the district. It's supposed to be District 4. And CR 2, letter F of the CAM, correct. District is again District 4. So...
That's not true. Let's see the other one. District 2. I'm sorry for interrupting. I felt they weren't both for. One of them said for it and needed to be 2.
CM 7 should have changed from 4 to 2, and then there was one item on the budget amendment.
But that's not what the mayor just read, so I just want to make sure.
And it was Item F, and it was 2, and it should have changed to 4.
Okay, so CM 7, the correct district should be District 2.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. Someone like to move the agenda as amended and the minutes as amended?
Moved.
Moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Here. Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Here.
Mayor Trump House?
Here.
We have full attendance. We have a couple of agenda announcements. We have a walk-on motion. This is a motion approving an outdoor event agreement and request for music exemption with 1134 LLC for Smitty's Super Bowl Sunday Watch Party. Place to be. And then we have OFR 1 is going to be removed from the agenda. We have some changes to the minutes. January 7, 2025, page 9, last paragraph was revised to replace "this" neighbor with "the neighborhood." And CM 7, we correct the district. It's supposed to be District 4. And CR 2, letter F of the CAM, correct. District is again District 4. So...
That's not true. Let's see the other one. District 2. I'm sorry for interrupting. I felt they weren't both for. One of them said for it and needed to be 2.
CM 7 should have changed from 4 to 2, and then there was one item on the budget amendment.
But that's not what the mayor just read, so I just want to make sure.
And it was Item F, and it was 2, and it should have changed to 4.
Okay, so CM 7, the correct district should be District 2.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. Someone like to move the agenda as amended and the minutes as amended?
Moved.
Moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Here. Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Here.
Mayor Trump House?
Here.
We have full attendance. We have a couple of agenda announcements. We have a walk-on motion. This is a motion approving an outdoor event agreement and request for music exemption with 1134 LLC for Smitty's Super Bowl Sunday Watch Party. Place to be. And then we have OFR 1 is going to be removed from the agenda. We have some changes to the minutes. January 7, 2025, page 9, last paragraph was revised to replace "this" neighbor with "the neighborhood." And CM 7, we correct the district. It's supposed to be District 4. And CR 2, letter F of the CAM, correct. District is again District 4. So...
That's not true. Let's see the other one. District 2. I'm sorry for interrupting. I felt they weren't both for. One of them said for it and needed to be 2.
CM 7 should have changed from 4 to 2, and then there was one item on the budget amendment.
But that's not what the mayor just read, so I just want to make sure.
And it was Item F, and it was 2, and it should have changed to 4.
Okay, so CM 7, the correct district should be District 2.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. Someone like to move the agenda as amended and the minutes as amended?
Moved.
Moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Here. Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Here.
Mayor Trump House?
Here.
We have full attendance. We have a couple of agenda announcements. We have a walk-on motion. This is a motion approving an outdoor event agreement and request for music exemption with 1134 LLC for Smitty's Super Bowl Sunday Watch Party. Place to be. And then we have OFR 1 is going to be removed from the agenda. We have some changes to the minutes. January 7, 2025, page 9, last paragraph was revised to replace "this" neighbor with "the neighborhood." And CM 7, we correct the district. It's supposed to be District 4. And CR 2, letter F of the CAM, correct. District is again District 4. So...
That's not true. Let's see the other one. District 2. I'm sorry for interrupting. I felt they weren't both for. One of them said for it and needed to be 2.
CM 7 should have changed from 4 to 2, and then there was one item on the budget amendment.
But that's not what the mayor just read, so I just want to make sure.
And it was Item F, and it was 2, and it should have changed to 4.
Okay, so CM 7, the correct district should be District 2.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. Someone like to move the agenda as amended and the minutes as amended?
Moved.
Moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Here. Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Here.
Mayor Trump House?
Here.
We have full attendance. We have a couple of agenda announcements. We have a walk-on motion. This is a motion approving an outdoor event agreement and request for music exemption with 1134 LLC for Smitty's Super Bowl Sunday Watch Party. Place to be. And then we have OFR 1 is going to be removed from the agenda. We have some changes to the minutes. January 7, 2025, page 9, last paragraph was revised to replace "this" neighbor with "the neighborhood." And CM 7, we correct the district. It's supposed to be District 4. And CR 2, letter F of the CAM, correct. District is again District 4. So...
That's not true. Let's see the other one. District 2. I'm sorry for interrupting. I felt they weren't both for. One of them said for it and needed to be 2.
CM 7 should have changed from 4 to 2, and then there was one item on the budget amendment.
But that's not what the mayor just read, so I just want to make sure.
And it was Item F, and it was 2, and it should have changed to 4.
Okay, so CM 7, the correct district should be District 2.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. Someone like to move the agenda as amended and the minutes as amended?
Moved.
Moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Here. Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Here.
Mayor Trump House?
Here.
We have full attendance. We have a couple of agenda announcements. We have a walk-on motion. This is a motion approving an outdoor event agreement and request for music exemption with 1134 LLC for Smitty's Super Bowl Sunday Watch Party. Place to be. And then we have OFR 1 is going to be removed from the agenda. We have some changes to the minutes. January 7, 2025, page 9, last paragraph was revised to replace "this" neighbor with "the neighborhood." And CM 7, we correct the district. It's supposed to be District 4. And CR 2, letter F of the CAM, correct. District is again District 4. So...
That's not true. Let's see the other one. District 2. I'm sorry for interrupting. I felt they weren't both for. One of them said for it and needed to be 2.
CM 7 should have changed from 4 to 2, and then there was one item on the budget amendment.
But that's not what the mayor just read, so I just want to make sure.
And it was Item F, and it was 2, and it should have changed to 4.
Okay, so CM 7, the correct district should be District 2.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. Someone like to move the agenda as amended and the minutes as amended?
Moved.
Moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Here. Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Here.
Mayor Trump House?
Here.
We have full attendance. We have a couple of agenda announcements. We have a walk-on motion. This is a motion approving an outdoor event agreement and request for music exemption with 1134 LLC for Smitty's Super Bowl Sunday Watch Party. Place to be. And then we have OFR 1 is going to be removed from the agenda. We have some changes to the minutes. January 7, 2025, page 9, last paragraph was revised to replace "this" neighbor with "the neighborhood." And CM 7, we correct the district. It's supposed to be District 4. And CR 2, letter F of the CAM, correct. District is again District 4. So...
That's not true. Let's see the other one. District 2. I'm sorry for interrupting. I felt they weren't both for. One of them said for it and needed to be 2.
CM 7 should have changed from 4 to 2, and then there was one item on the budget amendment.
But that's not what the mayor just read, so I just want to make sure.
And it was Item F, and it was 2, and it should have changed to 4.
Okay, so CM 7, the correct district should be District 2.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. Someone like to move the agenda as amended and the minutes as amended?
Moved.
Moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Here. Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Here.
Mayor Trump House?
Here.
We have full attendance. We have a couple of agenda announcements. We have a walk-on motion. This is a motion approving an outdoor event agreement and request for music exemption with 1134 LLC for Smitty's Super Bowl Sunday Watch Party. Place to be. And then we have OFR 1 is going to be removed from the agenda. We have some changes to the minutes. January 7, 2025, page 9, last paragraph was revised to replace "this" neighbor with "the neighborhood." And CM 7, we correct the district. It's supposed to be District 4. And CR 2, letter F of the CAM, correct. District is again District 4. So...
That's not true. Let's see the other one. District 2. I'm sorry for interrupting. I felt they weren't both for. One of them said for it and needed to be 2.
CM 7 should have changed from 4 to 2, and then there was one item on the budget amendment.
But that's not what the mayor just read, so I just want to make sure.
And it was Item F, and it was 2, and it should have changed to 4.
Okay, so CM 7, the correct district should be District 2.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. Someone like to move the agenda as amended and the minutes as amended?
Moved.
Moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Here. Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Here.
Mayor Trump House?
Here.
We have full attendance. We have a couple of agenda announcements. We have a walk-on motion. This is a motion approving an outdoor event agreement and request for music exemption with 1134 LLC for Smitty's Super Bowl Sunday Watch Party. Place to be. And then we have OFR 1 is going to be removed from the agenda. We have some changes to the minutes. January 7, 2025, page 9, last paragraph was revised to replace "this" neighbor with "the neighborhood." And CM 7, we correct the district. It's supposed to be District 4. And CR 2, letter F of the CAM, correct. District is again District 4. So...
That's not true. Let's see the other one. District 2. I'm sorry for interrupting. I felt they weren't both for. One of them said for it and needed to be 2.
CM 7 should have changed from 4 to 2, and then there was one item on the budget amendment.
But that's not what the mayor just read, so I just want to make sure.
And it was Item F, and it was 2, and it should have changed to 4.
Okay, so CM 7, the correct district should be District 2.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. Someone like to move the agenda as amended and the minutes as amended?
Moved.
Moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Here. Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Here.
Mayor Trump House?
Here.
We have full attendance. We have a couple of agenda announcements. We have a walk-on motion. This is a motion approving an outdoor event agreement and request for music exemption with 1134 LLC for Smitty's Super Bowl Sunday Watch Party. Place to be. And then we have OFR 1 is going to be removed from the agenda. We have some changes to the minutes. January 7, 2025, page 9, last paragraph was revised to replace "this" neighbor with "the neighborhood." And CM 7, we correct the district. It's supposed to be District 4. And CR 2, letter F of the CAM, correct. District is again District 4. So...
That's not true. Let's see the other one. District 2. I'm sorry for interrupting. I felt they weren't both for. One of them said for it and needed to be 2.
CM 7 should have changed from 4 to 2, and then there was one item on the budget amendment.
But that's not what the mayor just read, so I just want to make sure.
And it was Item F, and it was 2, and it should have changed to 4.
Okay, so CM 7, the correct district should be District 2.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. Someone like to move the agenda as amended and the minutes as amended?
Moved.
Moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Here. Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Here.
Mayor Trump House?
Here.
We have full attendance. We have a couple of agenda announcements. We have a walk-on motion. This is a motion approving an outdoor event agreement and request for music exemption with 1134 LLC for Smitty's Super Bowl Sunday Watch Party. Place to be. And then we have OFR 1 is going to be removed from the agenda. We have some changes to the minutes. January 7, 2025, page 9, last paragraph was revised to replace "this" neighbor with "the neighborhood." And CM 7, we correct the district. It's supposed to be District 4. And CR 2, letter F of the CAM, correct. District is again District 4. So...
That's not true. Let's see the other one. District 2. I'm sorry for interrupting. I felt they weren't both for. One of them said for it and needed to be 2.
CM 7 should have changed from 4 to 2, and then there was one item on the budget amendment.
But that's not what the mayor just read, so I just want to make sure.
And it was Item F, and it was 2, and it should have changed to 4.
Okay, so CM 7, the correct district should be District 2.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. Someone like to move the agenda as amended and the minutes as amended?
Moved.
Moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Here. Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Here.
Mayor Trump House?
Here.
We have full attendance. We have a couple of agenda announcements. We have a walk-on motion. This is a motion approving an outdoor event agreement and request for music exemption with 1134 LLC for Smitty's Super Bowl Sunday Watch Party. Place to be. And then we have OFR 1 is going to be removed from the agenda. We have some changes to the minutes. January 7, 2025, page 9, last paragraph was revised to replace "this" neighbor with "the neighborhood." And CM 7, we correct the district. It's supposed to be District 4. And CR 2, letter F of the CAM, correct. District is again District 4. So...
That's not true. Let's see the other one. District 2. I'm sorry for interrupting. I felt they weren't both for. One of them said for it and needed to be 2.
CM 7 should have changed from 4 to 2, and then there was one item on the budget amendment.
But that's not what the mayor just read, so I just want to make sure.
And it was Item F, and it was 2, and it should have changed to 4.
Okay, so CM 7, the correct district should be District 2.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trantellus?
Yes, and that item is now approved. So earlier this evening, the City Commission and staff had the opportunity to recognize the Teachers of the Year in all of our schools that are in Fort Lauderdale. And we have those teachers here today and right now. And it's really an honor for us to begin this program. This is the first year, and it's something we will do on an annual basis, because I think it's important for teachers to be recognized for the great work that they do and for the dedication that they commit to the children and to the parents and to the community each day they show up for work. So I'd like to invite all those teachers who received their award, if you could come up here, so we can take a group picture of everybody, all right?
Yeah.
Former teachers come up.
Wouldn't it make sense for us to stay up here? Because there's a lot of people up there.
There are, but the lighting has to be...
Okay. Who's there?
All right, Commissioner, you can get right here on the end. Yeah, right there.
All right, one's on me, and then I'm gonna move out of the way so everybody will see it. All right, one, two.
Now, I would like to invite my colleague on the Commission, Commissioner Pamela Beasley Pittman, who's going to present a proclamation regarding Black History Month here in the city of Fort Lauderdale. Commissioner Beasley Pittman. Okay, and I would like Marsha Ellison, if you could please join us at the podium. Marsha Ellison is the president of the Fort Lauderdale Broward County branch of the NAACP.
Okay, Roosevelt Walters. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. I'm really honored and excited to be able to present this proclamation. It is Black History Month, and this is an opportunity for us as a city to stand and recognize the great input and the great, I'm starting to lose my words here, great opportunities that we as African-Americans have contributed to the city of Fort Lauderdale. So with that being said, I'm going to read the proclamation from the Office of the Mayor of the City of Fort Lauderdale. In recognition of the National Black History Month, February 2025, whereas February is recognized as National Black History Month, a time to celebrate the culture, the heritage, and the contributions of African-Americans, the city of Fort Lauderdale proudly honors and honors the strength, the resilience, and the achievements of Black individuals who leadership and innovation continues to inspire generations. And whereas during this month's long celebration, we pray tribute to the legacies of Black pioneers, many whose sacrificed their lives in the pursuit of freedom, equality, and the preservation of human rights. We recognize the accomplishments of countless Black leaders, past and present, who has helped shape the history and the influence of our nation's progress. And whereas, we honor local Black heroes, including Eula Johnson, Eula Grady Johnson, Dr. James F. Sixtrunk, and Dr. Von D. Mizel. Their example of preservation in the face of adversity and longtime commitment to pursuing civil rights for Black Americans continue to inspire us all. And whereas, Eula Johnson, I'm gonna have to say Ms. Eula Johnson, I'm sorry, I have to give that Ms. Eula Johnson to this, served as the head of the Fort Lauderdale NAACP from 1959 to 1967, who was known as the Rosa Parks of Broward County. On July 4th, 1961, she and Dr. Von Mizel led a historic Wade-in-the-water at the all-white Fort Lauderdale Beach, paving the way for Beaches desegregation. Johnson continued her fight for civil rights by leading efforts to integrate the city's drive-ins, restaurants, schools, all while spearheading voter registration drives. A plaque honoring her legacy stands at La Solas Boulevard and Fort Lauderdale Beach Boulevard. And whereas, Dr. James F. Sixtrunk, the first Black medical doctor to practice in Fort Lauderdale, partnered with Dr. Mizel to open Providence Hospital in 1938 to serve the city's Black population. Today, Sixtrunk Boulevard is named in honor, and the L.A. Lee YMCA Mizel Center, Community Center, named after Dr. Mizel, sits on the former site of the Prominent Hospital with a plaque in its library memorizing the history. And whereas, the determination and the courage of Eula Johnson, Dr. James F. Sixtrunk, and Dr. Von Mizel paved the way for the progress in Fort Lauderdale's Black community. Their bravery and their commitment to achieving equality for all remains deeply embedded in the community today. And their legacy lives on through numerous individuals and organizations. Whereas, under the leadership of Ms. Marsha Ellis, president of the Fort Lauderdale Broward NAACP, the organization continues to uphold the legacy of past civil rights leaders by advocating for justice, equality, and the empowerment of Black residents in our community. Through her leadership, the NAACP remains at the forefront of social change, fighting for the protection of civil rights and the advancements and opportunities for all. And whereas, the city of Fort Lauderdale is committed to celebrating Black culture and embracing diversity through events like Remembering Our Roots, Ki G Mojo, and the annual Sixtrunk Parade and Festival, recognizing the invaluable contributions of Black Americans in our community and across the nation. Now, therefore, we, the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, do hereby proclaim February 2025 as National Black History Month in the city of Fort Lauderdale, dated this day, the 4th day of February 2025, by the Honorable Dean Trantellus. Would you like to share? I want to certainly thank the city. In these times, one never knows. We have had a long history with the city of Fort Lauderdale since our organization began and was founded here in Fort Lauderdale on August 30th, 1945. Things were not so good then, but I'm happy to say that things are going well. We are wonderful partners, I believe, and I look forward to a continuation with that. Roosevelt Walters is here because 12 years in that seat deserves to be standing here with the rest of us, and you all know exactly. Carlton B. Moore is also a former president and longtime commissioner, and so the work continues. But we thank you for your continued support and your continued partnership. Peace and power.
Thank you. city tonight. So let us now go on with the rest of the meeting. I will now ask any, the members of the Commission, if they want to pull an item from the consent agenda. What does that mean? That means that there are items... Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming. That is, the City Commission votes on certain items all at once, and that's considered the consent agenda. If there's a Commissioner that wishes to pull an item, that will be discussed and voted on separately. This will be the opportunity for them to do that. I have no one who signed up to speak on anything tonight, so otherwise, the member of the public would be invited to speak also at this time on any of these consent agenda items. So having said that, I'll start with Commissioner Herbst. Are there any consent agenda items that you wish to pull?
Yes, CM 6.
CM 6, okay. Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
No items, thank you.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
None, thank you.
And Commissioner Sorenson?
None, thanks.
Okay, so except for CM 6, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
Moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
They moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trantellus?
Yes, and all those consent agenda items are now approved, except for CM 6. So if you're hearing any of those items, you're certainly welcome to stay and be part of the rest of the meeting, or otherwise, you may, you can leave now. So CM 6 is a motion approving a license application and agreement for the sale, service, and consumption of food and alcoholic beverages on the public beach for Ron Bahia Mar, the Bahia Mar Resort. Commissioner.
So I am abstaining on this, on the belief that it may appear that I have a potential conflict of interest under provisions of the Code of Ethics for public officers and employees. Thank you.
Okay. I think there's a pecuniary requirement there, Mr. Spence.
He's stating under the Code of Ethics, under section, actually, under section 286.012.
Okay. Okay, so would someone like to move the item?
Moved.
They moved. Do I hear a second?
Second.
They moved the seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst abstains. Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trantellus?
Yes, and that item is now approved. Moving on to motions. M1, motion approving an agreement for the Progressive Village Stormwater Improvements. Anyone have any questions? If none, someone like to introduce the item?
Introduce.
Excuse me. Move the item, sorry. Move the item.
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. To move the seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trantellus?
Yes, and M1's now approved. M2, okay, motion selecting a city manager finalist and naming a city official or staff member to conduct discussions with the selected finalists for the purpose of presenting terms for a proposed employment contract to the City Commission for consideration. So this is, this is a complicated motion. We are selecting a finalist, and we're naming an official to engage in negotiations for the employment contract. So we should bifurcate this?
If you find that to be more efficient.
Yeah. So would someone like to move regarding selecting the city manager finalist?
Move.
And who, and the name is?
Raquel Williams.
Okay, so the motion on the floor is to select Raquel Williams, the applicant for the city manager position. Do I hear a second?
Second.
They moved and seconded. Any questions? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trantellus?
Yes. Okay, now, we have to select, name a city official or staff member to conduct discussions with regard to the proposed employment contract. Someone want to introduce a motion?
Mayor, if we could just, a little discussion first, maybe, on that?
Well, yeah, you can do that, too.
So I defer to the mayor. You mayor, you want to lead this effort. It's also something I do in my business life, negotiating corporate contracts, so I'm willing if the need be there. Thank you.
Okay. Is that a motion?
Would you like to do it, Mayor?
I'd be, I'd be happy. I think, I think we've always, I think traditionally, it's always been the mayor to do that, so...
Great, and I'll move that the mayor lead the contract negotiations with incoming city manager, Raquel Williams.
Second.
Okay, anyone have any other comments?
No comments. That was my question. What was the tradition in the past, how this was done? So you explained that, so no questions from me.
Okay. All right, if there are no further comments or questions?
And just to clarify, so the mayor's gonna have those discussions with Ms. Williams and bring, and will draft a contract to bring back to the City Commission for their...
Approval.
Approval.
Correct. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trantellus?
Yes, and those, I guess those two motions are now approved. Thank you.
Good luck.
You gonna promise not to beat us up?
And don't ask us any questions.
Just don't beat me up. Well, I just want to say thank you so much for the unanimous vote of support and the trust that you have placed in me to manage the city of Fort Lauderdale. To the staff, I commit to leading with integrity and authenticity and fairness. And to the community, I look forward to meeting with you, to getting to know you and your concerns, and I look forward to working on your behalf. So again, I just wanted to say thank you for this opportunity, and I look forward to the future and everything that Fort Lauderdale has to offer.
Thank you so much.
Mayor, question on that. I asked Susan Grant if we could have an analysis of city manager pay throughout the county, and so we have that analysis. And if you haven't seen it, it's, you know, Susan has it, but as you think about engaging, these are, I think, some helpful benchmarks around salary and benefits and so forth.
I think that makes a lot of sense. If you can cobble that together, great, all right.
Great. Thanks. Thanks, Mayor.
Have we discussed a starting date? Raquel, are you still here? Oh, can you come, can you come up here?
Let's give that to the mayor. That's the salary range.
Okay. I guess somebody already did this.
Yeah, I asked Susan to do it, so she did.
So what time, what kind of transition are we looking at? You have to give notice, well, all they have to do is read the paper. You have to give notice, and I guess you promised a certain amount of time that you would stay with Miami Beach until you left there. Give us a little understanding of what you, what you've told them.
Well, this is all very fresh, and I have had a preliminary conversation with the city manager in Miami Beach, and I do want to be professional in the way that this transition unfolds. And so I anticipate giving notice once I have a contract that's approved. And my intention is to start as soon as possible, hopefully at the beginning of April. I would also... unfolds. And so, I anticipate giving notice once I have a contract that's approved. And my intention is to start as soon as possible, hopefully, at the beginning of April. I would also appreciate if I could have an opportunity to meet with staff in advance, just so that I can understand some of the details on various projects and initiatives. And so, I would want to schedule those meetings as soon as possible, starting tomorrow.
Okay, well, that, that's up to you. You know, I'm sure we'll make everybody available. And then, but you're looking at an April 1st start date. Let's see, what day of the week does that start on?
That's a Tuesday, and I would be open to starting on the Monday. So, the very end of March.
March 31st? March 31st? Okay. All righty.
Mayor, what's your sense in terms of timing to bring a contract back to the City Commission?
Before the end of February, we should probably have something together. Yeah, I'll make myself available. I'm not going anywhere. So, we should be able to find some for that.
Great. So, aim for February 18th meeting?
Uh, no. Maybe the March 4th.
March 4th? Does that, how's that work on timing for you?
I, I think that's perfect.
March 4th?
Yes.
Okay. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, great. M3, motion approving an agreement for design services for the fire rescue station number 13 and emergency medical substation number 88. Anyone have any questions with regard to this item? We have someone, one person who signed up to speak, Mr. Dickman.
I was supposed to speak.
Well, you put the wrong one down.
No, I put the other one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
You want to say something?
No.
Okay. I'm sorry. I got so excited, I couldn't, I forgot. Okay, sorry. Although, I don't think your voice has ever been tempered, so I, I don't think. Okay. Um, okay, M3. Someone like to move the item?
Moved.
Second.
They're moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and M3 is now approved. M4, motion approving a change order number four to task order number six for consultant services for the new police headquarters. Anyone have any questions with regard to this? Okay, there being none, someone like to move the item?
Moved.
Second.
They're moved and seconded. Please call the, the roll.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
No.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and that item is now approved. The walk-on item, uh, do I have the title of it?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. This is the walk-on item. It's a motion approving an outdoor event agreement and request for music exemption with 1134 LLC for Smitty's Super Bowl Sunday Watch Party. You all received the, the backup for this. My concern is not so much Smitty's, but everybody around, everyone who gathers around in the neighborhood. And this is your neighborhood, isn't it, Pam?
Yeah, this is District 3, yes, and my actual neighborhood, yes.
Do you have any thoughts on this that you want to share? Are you okay?
Um, the event is supported and embraced by the neighbors. This is something that...
To a fault, to a fault.
But no, we, we look forward to the event annually, um, through the HOA that, that I'm also a member of. Haven't heard any pushback or concerns about the event, the extension for the, the music extension. Haven't heard anything from anyone that is leading me to believe that they wouldn't support this, for this, this event.
Okay. Is Sweet Smithstone here? Want to come up and speak? She signed up to speak? You signed up for this item, right?
Yeah, but only if I needed to. I don't have anything to say.
Oh, okay. You're just for questions?
No.
No, just to take questions?
Yes, yes, for questions.
Any questions of Ms. Sweet? Okay. There being none, someone like to move the item?
Second.
They're moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and that item is now approved. So, so, enjoy the party. Let me ask, oh, never mind. R1, appointment of board and committee members. Mr. Clerk, would you like to read the names into the record?
Yes, for the February 18th resolution, Gary Hensley, that's Community Services Board, nominated by Vice Mayor Glassman. And for tonight, Budget Advisor Board, Desiree Gillis-Smith, nominated by Commissioner Beasley Pittman, Melinda Booker, nominated by Commissioner Sorenson, City Attorney Search Committee, Sigrid McCauley, nominated by Vice Mayor Glassman, Community Appearance Board, Yvette Gillis-Stewart, nominated by Commissioner Beasley Pittman, Historic Preservation Board, Robert Golden, nominated by Vice Mayor Glassman, Infrastructure Task Force Advisory Committee, Lindsay Way, nominated by Commissioner Sorenson, Nuisance Abatement Board, Joel Slotnick, nominated by Mayor Trentalles, Public Art and Placement Advisory Board, Elizabeth Wenberg, nominated by Commissioner Herbst, and we received two additional names after publishing. For the Cemetery Systems Board of Trustees, Alfonso Canales, nominated by Commissioner Herbst, and Education Advisor Board, Pamela Vance, nominated by Commissioner Beasley Pittman, and that rounds it out.
Okay. Any other modifications or additions to the names that have been read? There being none, would someone like to introduce the item?
Introduce.
The item's been introduced. Please call the roll.
And that's as amended, correct?
As amended, yes.
Thank you. A resolution in City Commission of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, appointing or nominating, if applicable, board and committee members as a fourth in the exhibit attached here to and made a part here of. Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and R1 is now approved. I just want to thank all those individuals, individuals who have volunteered to serve on the board or committee. Thank you for your commitment to our city. R2, this is a quasi-judicial resolution. This is regarding approving the vacation of utility easements located at 2750 Northwest 19th Street in the city of Fort Lauderdale. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in, and the commission will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received, and make them a part of the record. Anyone, Commissioner Herbst, do you have any disclosures?
Let me get back to you on that, Mayor.
Okay. Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
None.
I have none. Vice Mayor?
None.
Commissioner Sorenson?
None.
Okay.
And that would be none for me as well.
Okay. No one has signed up to speak. No one has signed up to speak. Someone, please, move to close the public hearing.
Moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
They're moved and seconded to close public hearing. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes. Someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduce.
Introduce.
A resolution in City Commission of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, vacating portions of those certain platted utility easements legally described together as the south five feet less the west five feet. In the west five feet of the south, 12.5 feet of Lot 15, the west five feet of Lot 11, the east five feet of Lot 12, and the east five feet of the south, 36.28 feet of Lot 13, Olive Block 1, Lauderdale Manor's home sites, according to plat thereof as recorded in Plac Book 34, page 21 of the public records of Broward County, Florida, located west of Northwest 26 Terrace, north of Northwest 18th Court, east of Northwest 28th Avenue, and south of Northeast 19th Street, all said lands being in the city of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida. Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
I'm sorry, where is it? I'm sorry. I couldn't help it.
It's the five feet, the five feet of the...
I'm just messing with you, yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and R2 is now approved. OFR1, this is a first reading of an ordinance in the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, to create a dependent special district pursuit to... Oh, wait, that's being pulled. Pardon me. Never mind. OFR2, this is ordinance's first reading.
Mayor, before we get to that?
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to back up on this one a little bit, so.
On OFR1?
On OFR1, yeah.
Sure.
So, D. Wayne, would you kind of elaborate on that, so people understand why it's being pulled, and let's talk about this a little bit?
Sure, sure. So, when we initially provided the, the information to city staff and the commission with regards to these districts, we were looking at the other districts within the state that have operated under this provision, and most of those were county districts that were created by ordinance. Uniquely, we're a city that's creating this district by ordinance, and there's only one other in the state that is done, which is Pompano Beach. When we reviewed the state constitution, there's a provision in there with regards to special districts that requires, when the millage is set, that it's done through a vote of the freeholders within the district. So, the counties have a special statute that deals with their, their situation, and so, they're set up differently. And we just want to explore the nuances between how the counties, districts are set up by ordinance versus what the municipalities' ordinances are set up. And just want to make sure we have the process correct. So, so, we could technically set up the district, but the question is with regards to how we levy the actual ad valorem taxes.
So, one of the things that I've learned in the last couple of weeks since we first started talking about it, amongst other things, is that apparently, many of the people in the city had no idea that we've been talking about this on and off for the better part of a year. So, I think we have a, a large gap in terms of educating the public about what this is. One of the things that was left out of the newspaper article was, and Mayor, you brought up a question about what would happen to the regular millage. You know, my response was that we should reduce it by an offsetting amount. That never made it into the paper, and unfortunately, when people started writing in and calling me, you know, they were under the impression that we were just going to try and raise another $50 million. And I've, I've been at pains to explain to them that that's not necessarily the case. The other idea was that they thought this was going to go into effect immediately. So, my takeaway from all this is that we have a huge, huge education component that we really missed out on if we want to do this. And I really think that we would benefit if we, if we do ever want to put this in place. That I think this is really ideal for a referendum. You know, this is the kind of thing where I think our residents really need to weigh in on this. So, I really like to explore how we go about doing that, i- if this is to ever come back in the future. That I think that's the way to do it. So, just want those thoughts out there. I'd love to hear what my colleagues have to say on that, but that's just the impression I've got, because everything I've heard has been overwhelmingly negative. I've done my best to try and communicate why we've talked about this and the need for hiring additional firefighters for the two stations we have under construction, and the one we talked about adding potentially in a couple of years. I've talked about three men on a truck, and just the, the needs to increase our total complement above our current state. But again, that's not resonating. All I'm hearing is just cut everything else. And so, we really need an education process on this. And, and again, I think if we're going to do something this dramatic, I think a referendum, if that's feasible, D. Wayne, is really the way to go on this.
Well, I understand that's the only way to go. And, and I agree that every time we do something like this, you know, we should do as much as we can to educate everyone to understand the issues, both pro and con, with regard to something like this. But, D. Wayne, you're telling us that if we are going to move forward on this, it has to require a, a public referendum to approve adding this to the tax bill. So, that's our, that's, that's how the code reads?
I'm saying that the constitution requires that for special districts as a, as a general principle.
The state constitution?
The state constitution. So, but I wanted to explore, and we wanted our office to research that issue a little bit more.
Okay.
To understand it. So, I'm not giving you a definitive statement on that.
So, we'll table it for now, and, you know, it's, it's come off the agenda, so we need to research that a little bit more. But even though I was not in favor of this, I, I am in favor of letting the people decide.
I think even if we don't have to, I think it would still be the best way to go. I mean, even if it turns out that it's not necessarily a requirement, I still think, Mayor, that we really need to put this in front of the voters and let them decide before we do something that clearly is, is initially not getting any support from the folks I've talked to. So, I wouldn't, I would never want to move forward at this point with it, irrespective of my feelings about the advisability of it, without making sure that, you know, the residents are really in favor of it, so.
Okay.
Mayor, I, if I could just say, and I, I want to concur with everything that Commissioner Herbst is saying about this, but I'm going to take it a step further, because my office has also spent a great deal of time trying to explain what this is all about. Also, we've taken a lot of heat, because although I have said that I support moving forward with the setting up of the structure, I was never, ever saying that I was in support of actually initiating the tax. But I always thought that setting up the structure was a good way to go as we head into the meat of the budget season, because it gives us another tool in the toolbox. We don't know what we're doing in terms of millage rate. We don't know what our needs are. I just thought it was an option that we have. That being said, I don't understand why this issue is now being fleshed out now. Why wasn't this all thought of in advance of any one of us that had to go through all of this explanation to our constituents, all of the angst, all of the misinformation, all of the communication? Why didn't we think about this prior to even beginning our discussions and save us all of that, that time and that debate and that consternation and anxiety on behalf of constituents? Why, it almost seems like this should have been the discussion before we even had this discussion of setting up the structure for the EMS taxing district. So, I apologize for that. We, we did, we did do our due diligence in terms of providing you with the memorandum with regards to how a special district would be set up. We did provide the commission with an outline of the various special districts that are there. This particular nuance in law is something that honestly, we just did not catch in the process. And it, and the issue itself, sort of embarrassed to say, was raised as a result of looking into the issue that you raised, which is the ability to set up the district without actually levying the tax. And so, when I had folks in our office researching that issue about whether or not, or what do we need to do in terms of setting the millage, this issue came up to the forefront. So, I can only promise to do better, and I, I understand the angst and, and the issue that that caused. And that, you know, this is a very specialized area of law, not, you know, something that doesn't occur every day. But we will make sure in the future that, in particular, issues of this magnitude, that you, as a commission, get full legal advice from our office. Yeah, I, I just would appreciate it, because when I, when I read that this was being pulled, and I read why, I said, oh, my gosh. I said, why didn't we know this a year ago? It would have just saved us a lot of time and negativity.
Okay, all right.
No, I'm not done, Mayor, but thank you anyway.
Okay.
Because I can vet now, because I need to vet now, because you don't know what my office went through for the last several months on this issue. So, I'll be done soon, I promise you, but I will get it all off of my chest. Thank you. Again, it would be really helpful if we knew these kinds of things before we get into these kinds of discussions and get everybody all upset. So, let me just ask this question, then I'll be finished, and then I'll make the mayor happy. I just want to make sure that, obviously, this is not happening. We had those time constraints, right? Because we were trying to see if we could get this on the ballot. So, that's, correct me if I'm wrong, that's all out the window now, correct?
Correct, for 20, for the budget year 2026. That's correct.
So, no longer even a topic of conversation. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any further comments? Well, it's not even an agenda item, so, but there are no further comments. We'll continue on with the, with the meeting. Moving on to OSR1, this is a second reading. Excuse me.
OFR?
Pardon me. OSR2. OF, OFR2. This is the first reading of an ordinance amending section 26161 of the Code of Ordinances, Code of Ordinances, to establish a fee structure for permanent and temporary parking removal for on-street parking. Anyone have any questions with regard to this item? No one signed up to speak? Someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduce.
The ordinance has been introduced. Please call the roll.
An ordinance of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending section 26-161 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, entitled Rates and Hours for On- and Off-Street Parking, revising the Zone 2 boundaries for applicable resident and non-resident parking rates, establishing a parking mitigation fee structure for the temporary or permanent removal of metered on-street parking spaces, and providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinance provisions in an effective date. Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Halls?
Yes, and the ordinance is now approved on first reading. OSR 1, second reading, an ordinance amending Chapter 28 regarding waste, wastewater, and stormwater, and a lot of other things. Cease and desist order, recodifying Sections 25-252 through 28-254 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Fort Lauderdale. Anyone have any questions with regard to this item? There being none, would someone like to introduce the ordinance on second reading? Introduced. Please call the roll.
In ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending Chapter 28, Water, Wastewater, and Stormwater, Sections 28-203, 28-223, 28-231, creating a new section, 28-251, cease and desist order and recodifying Sections 22-252 through 28-254 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, by adding and removing language in accordance with Chapter 62-625, Florida Administrative Code, repeal of conflicting ordinance provisions and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Halls?
Yes, and OSR 1 is now approved on second reading. OSR 2, second reading, an ordinance amending the classification table of the pay plan of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, as amended by changing the pay grade of one classification and creating one new classification. No one to sign up to speak? Someone like to introduce the ordinance? Introduced. The ordinance has been introduced. Please call the roll.
In ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending the non-bargaining unit classification table, the pay plan of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, as amended by creating and adding one job classification and changing the pay grade of one job classification and providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinance provisions in an effective date. Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Halls?
Yes, and OSR 2 is now approved on second reading. Finally, OSR 3, this is second reading, quasi-judicial ordinance approving a rezoning from intense manufacturing and industrial, that's M3 Broward County District, to the Uptown Urban Village Southeast District in the City of Fort Lauderdale, 200 West Cypress Creek Road, 200 West Cypress Creek Holdings. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in, and the commission will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received and make them a part of the record. Commissioner Herbst, do you have any additional disclosures?
No, Ms. Toothaker.
I didn't hear you.
I said I met with Ms. Toothaker.
Okay. Commissioner Beasley-Pitman, any additional disclosures?
No additional disclosures.
Okay, I have no additional disclosures, Vice Mayor?
None, thank you.
Commissioner Sorenson?
None.
Okay. Only one person signed up to speak, just to answer questions. Anyone have any questions? There being none, someone please move to close public hearing. Move.
Moved.
They moved and seconded. I think Commissioner Herbst seconded.
I was looking at it if I didn't move it. I don't care.
One or the other, moved and the other one seconded it. All right. Motion to close public hearing has now been made. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Halls?
Yes, public hearing on OSR 3 is now closed. Someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduced.
Okay, the ordinance has now been introduced. Please call the roll.
In ordinance amending Section 47-1.6. B of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, Unified Land Development Regulations through the revision of the official zoning map of the City of Fort Lauderdale in Schedule A, revised compilation attached thereto and by reference made a part thereof, so as to rezone from intense manufacturing industrial district to urban uptown village southeast district, all of parcel A, Cypress Creek Office Development, according to the plat thereof as recorded in Plat Book 13, page 3, the public records of Broward County, Florida, located west of North Andrews Avenue, south of West Cypress Creek Boulevard, east of the Seaboard Coastline Railroad, and north of Northwest 57th Street, all said lands being the City of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida. Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Halls?
Yes, and OSR 3 is now approved on second reading. Duane, the rest of the agenda, isn't it really part of the conference meeting? Commissioner reports and so forth and so on?
Yes, but it was published as a part of the regular meeting agenda.
Okay, so we won't adjourn just yet. All right, very good. That's the regular agenda, so now we begin with commissioner reports. Commissioner Herbst, do you have any reports to share with us today? None? Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
Yes, I would like to share some activities that I was able to partake in, sharing with, given a report actually about the impact of the Infinite Scholars Program Scholarship Fair that was at the YMCA. Again, another great opportunity for the youth in our city and also the county overall. There was 937 students who attend the fair. Thirty colleges and universities were present. The amount given in scholarships that was awarded on the spot, $49.9 million. Do I have to say that again? Can I get some applause? This is awesome. This is a great opportunity for our youth. This is a program that's been in our community for over a decade. And when I was a HOA president, this was one of the things that we really, one of the items that we really pushed, and to see it grow to this level is very impressive. We, the city, we also, in a sense, partner with the Y to make sure it comes. So this is something I want to see that we move forward again in the years to come, to push it even further. This year, a repeat also, the school board, they came in this year, they provided bus transportation for the students throughout the county who are interested in coming to be a part of this. Again, that's the Infinite Scholars Scholarship Fund. And...
So that was 40, how many million?
$49.9 million.
$49 million.
Mm-hmm. We had 937 students who attended. I don't have the breakdown for how many actually received.
So that averaged $52,000 per student?
All right.
Wow.
Looking good. And then many of them, many of these scholars received full scholarships. So this is a great opportunity. So I'm thankful that we, as a city, are partnering with this and having an opportunity to give an opportunity as well to our students. Also, I would like to share, you can clap somewhere.
You brought your audience with you tonight.
Oh, you know, that's my ride and my ride. My ride and my ride. Okay, also, would like to share that on, let's see here, that was so exciting. Okay. This is exciting as well.
You got flustered.
On the 28th of January, I had a great opportunity to meet with Marrow's Manor Civic Association's President, Mr. Martin. Mr. Martin is new to the position, so we had a great conversation, revisiting what it is the neighborhood desires, what they are hoping to accomplish with a stronger relationship with me as the commissioner and with the city overall. So that was a great opportunity. Thank you, Mr. Martin, for your commitment to being in this road and representing the neighbors of the Marrow's Manor's community. Also, wanting to share that on Thursday, the 30th, January 30th, we attended the FXE ACE Awards at our airport, a beautiful event. I was able to be there with my colleagues. The mayor was there, so also was John Herbst. You know, we're so used to calling each other by first names, but Commissioner Herbst and the mayor. A beautiful event, and just grateful to be able to be a part of that. Rufus and to your staff, a wonderful opportunity to share with the community, the city, what is going on at the airport and those greater consumments that we are witnessing with that economic drive. There's some amazing numbers. I don't have the numbers, but big, big numbers that is being generated at our airport. Also, I want to go back, I want to say two things about an incident, the incident that happened at the NAACP office. There was a press conference regarding the gunfire that appeared to happen to the building. And the mayor and I and several other county, state, and city officials were there. We stood with President Marcia Ellis to talk about that incident. Definitely disheartening to witness that, being in the community, to think that we would, in this day and age, be witnessing something of that magnitude. With that being said, I said it at the press conference, definitely disgusted by what happened, but not intimidated. We're not going to be intimidated by the actions of that individual. We do not know if it was, what the thought was. We don't know. But standing with the opportunity with our police, it was said, we know that our chief, those who went in, they initially, they did what needs to be done, and they're moving forward at this point to identify what is going on. There is an award for $5,000 at this point that I understand may be growing to identify who that individual is. In that conversation, mayor and city manager acting and new city manager coming in, we need to address safety opportunities for that building, the NAACP building. The building is CRA, is city-owned, so we need to make sure that it is a safe haven for everyone who visits, have business there. Just some conversation of things that I thought of and shared with others. We do need, consider putting a fence around the property. We need to make sure that there is cameras that are able to capture everything that's going on around that building. And then also, the windows. You know, I'm not asking for the windows to be replaced, but I understand there is a product that you can use that is a screen for, or a film for bulletproofing windows. So we can look into that. That is a direction to say, as a city, that we respect the building, we want safety for everyone that goes into the building. So that is something I am asking for us to look into.
You know, they were impact windows, so it's amazing that a bullet was able to penetrate the impact windows. And it's also concerning to me that a picture has been distributed of a person of interest, and to this day, no one has stepped forward to help us out. And, you know, as you said at the press conference, and I believe Marcia Ellison also said this, that if you know something, say something. You know, the only way the police can succeed is with the community coming together and helping us. And again, we put that out to the community, that we need everyone's help to secure the identity of the person of interest and/or of anybody else that may have been involved that we don't necessarily know their identity today, but that's the way we're going to succeed in solving this crime. And it was a crime. It was a hate crime.
Yes. And with that being said, we applauded that initially two of the neighbors did step up and they shared information. So the community is moving in a direction where seeing something, saying something. And just even adding to the conversation that no one has come up to say anything at this point, sometimes individuals are not even from the area, so we may not be able to identify them right now. So we know that we have the FBI that's involved, that's also investigating. So we believe that the person will be identified, maybe a slow path, but they will be identified, and this will be brought to justice, so that we want, where this won't go unanswered.
Okay.
Okay? And then again, we did the proclamation, this is Black History Month.
Right.
And we are very excited, as we are every day, to share the history of people of color, all our contributions we have not only added to this community, the city, the state, the nationwide. There are so many stories. It's always an honor for me when I sit in the presence of the pioneers, those seniors, golden seniors we have in this city, and they share the stories of what has not been necessarily widespread, shared. I invite you all to have a conversation other than a hello, how are you doing today? And see what we actually are doing and what has been done to contribute to the elevation of our lives. So with that being said, that's my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you so much. Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank the Central Beach Alliance, had the pleasure of speaking with them on Thursday, January 23rd. They always get an amazing turnout, always a great discussion, and thank you to all of the staff that were there as well, presenting to that membership. On Friday, January 24th, I had the pleasure of speaking at the Broward Workshop, their Urban Corridor Committee. I want to thank them for their time. I also want to thank this group at the Broward Workshop for their unwavering support of a tunnel under the river for commuter rail. Their work in this area has been incredible, standing behind us and with us as a partner in the city, advocating for this as the solution and the only solution. So I wanted to thank the Broward Workshop for that as well. Wednesday, January 28th, it was a pleasure to welcome yet another fine dining establishment to our city, Catch and Cut on Las Olas Boulevard. Thursday, January 30th, I'm sorry, I think that was the 29th, actually. I attended the grand opening of the Mayfair Medical Establishment at 2810 East Oakland Park Boulevard. This is an amazing practice and pharmacy that basically their primary demographic is the LGBTQ community, a community that is suffering very much now, especially in terms of transgender healthcare and the lack of healthcare. So this is a group that has opened their business along with a pharmacy. But I will tell you that not only are they ministering to the LGBT community, but to anyone that is having a difficulty and a challenge navigating a very complicated healthcare system in our nation. They are wonderful people there, and I want to thank them for their work, and it was a pleasure to be with them for that ribbon cutting last week. Again, I wanted to thank our two candidates, our finalists, Raquel Williams and Jason Davis, for all of their time and effort in learning about our city. I am so very impressed with their work and their knowledge and their research and everything that they have learned, and I thought that what we heard today was a lot of eloquence and expertise. I'm very pleased and I'm very excited, and again, congratulations to Ms. Williams, and I'm looking forward to, Mayor, you finishing your work with her and getting on with the business of moving forward with our new city manager. So again, thank you to Jerome Post and HR. Thank you to the search committee, to all of those people for their volunteerism and their time, and to the community for paying attention and following this all the way through to today. And I thought our questions and answers session today was, again, an example of our transparency and our dedication to making sure that we move forward together as one unified city. Very gratifying to see a 5-0 unanimous vote to select Ms. Williams to this new post. So thank you to everyone involved. Coming up, we have several more noise ordinance update meetings. We have one at the Beach Community Center on Monday, February 10th. That night, we also are going to be having an in-person stormwater update for Progresso Village, where we just allocated almost $40 million for stormwater improvements in Progresso Village. I guess that we also have Tuesday, I'm looking forward to our joint meeting with the county to talk about issues such as the tunnel and also homelessness. Thank you to staff for getting the word out, and looking forward to Thursday, February 13th, his neighbor's support night. And again, I just wanted to thank everyone for all of the work that's been happening. Susan, I want to say thank you to you also. You stepped in as, is it interim or acting? I never remember which one.
One of the others.
One of the other, what's the difference? Interim, acting, whatever you want to call it, I want to say thank you. I want to say thank you for your work. It's been a pleasure working with you in this capacity, and I know we'll be doing so for a little bit more than another month in this capacity, and I want to say thank you. It's never easy to step into a role like that. I appreciate your communication and your willingness to work with each of us. Whenever I've had an issue in my district, you've always been so responsive in helping me with staff and getting everyone involved, from staff, from your office, and all the way down the line, and I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, and it's been my pleasure.
But you're not going so fast.
I have a few more meetings, yes.
Exactly. No, and I understand, and that's it for me, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Sorenson?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, Susan, I echo those comments. I think you've just done a fantastic job and looking forward... forward to keeping it going. So thank you. Speaking of which, George Lowmeyer Water Treatment Facility, want to talk about moving forward with the new odor control system that's been long kind of planned to talk about, Susan, just want to see what we need to do to take the next step.
A lot of Fabreeze.
So the item is ready to go. It was a single bid that we received from AECOM, and at the commission's pleasure, we will bring it back on February 18th, if that is what the direction we get.
Great, yeah, I'd like to do that, Mayor.
Single bid, always concerned about that. They're the only ones that responded?
Glenn is here. Yeah, Glenn, Glenn Singh, he's confirming, and I think when we do have that, there's a negotiation. Glenn, maybe.
I'm really concerned about the price point that we're facing, is it within the range of your expectations?
And also, why did we only get a single bid? Usually when there's a single bid, there's often a problem with the bid process itself and what we put out, maybe they didn't understand it.
Yeah, good question.
It's a valuable project, I can't imagine nobody else wants it.
Good evening, Commissioner Glenn Markle, Chief Procurement Officer. We did receive a single bid, that bid is from AECOM Technical Services. We have concerns with AECOM, as you are all aware of, of their responsibility. We're having some issues with other projects, primarily with some negotiations with the police headquarters, and then some performance as it deals with the master plan for for parks. So we thought that because of the fact that we only received a single bid, that proposal was approximately $20 million, that we are recommending to reject and start all over again.
Well, I personally think that without casting aspersions on AECOM, I just feel the process begs an opportunity for us to rebid it, because it may be to Commissioner Herbst's point, maybe there was some misunderstanding or confusion as to what the expectations were of the of the contractor community, maybe they didn't, maybe others didn't know that it was out there. But I'm always very concerned about a single bid, so why don't we do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hold on, hold on.
I want to have a discussion.
I know, you want, you want to participate, that's my, just my opinion.
What are your thoughts, Commissioner Sorenson?
Great, okay. So why would it be rebid? Help me understand that.
Well, we only received a single proposal, and as Commissioner Herbst was indicating, knowing for a fact that this is a $20 million project, we are trying to see if maybe further outreach is required, so we can entertain more than just the one proposal.
Okay, so when we only get one bid, we reject it?
So, not necessarily so, Commissioner. What we try to do within the processes is that we monitor the amount of activity within the strategic sourcing module, and then the tendency is, is that if we see up to the deadline, if we're only seeing a minimal or just the one response, we tend to extend the actual deadline, and then in between those deadlines that we extend, we try to conduct market research during that time, so we can salvage the bid.
Okay, and so what's your research found?
So obviously, we didn't find much as far as why there was a lack of interest. I'm not sure whether there has to be maybe a certain type of specialty that's required, that is part of the market research, and we are going to further investigate as to why just the one, the one proposal.
Okay.
But during that time, Commissioner, I'm sorry, during that time, we couldn't get enough information as to why the lack of participation.
Okay, when did we get this bid?
It's been a while. You're looking at, I would have to go back to my notes, I want to say it was sometime in 2023.
Okay.
And then negotiations occurred around, I think, May of 2024. And so since then, we've been going back and forth. We were ready to obviously maybe look into moving forward, but understanding the fact that AECOM really didn't negotiate and negotiate to our level of comfort, we feel just going with the one is not the best in the city's best interest, and so we're looking forward to a rebid.
Okay, so one of the concerns I have about this, Susan, I'm not sure why, maybe others have been told about this, I haven't been told any of this information until right now, and I'm confused as to why.
So Commissioner, the actual item is is actually scheduled to be presented to all of you during the next commission meeting. So it's been, it's been reviewed, I was actually approving it right now as we were speaking, but it is scheduled for the next commission meeting. I've not had any discussion with any commissioners about this.
What's scheduled for the next commission meeting?
The rejection of the proposal submitted by AECOM.
Okay, so if we got the bid in 2023, why are we, it sounds like you said there's research to do, did we start doing that research as soon as we got the bid?
So we've done some research, I can inform you that that during the competitive process, we issued four different addendums to the procurement. Perhaps maybe that was something that discouraged possible participants, because the level of the scope and specification was not detailed that they felt comfortable with, and that perhaps might be an indication as to why we received a $20 million proposal. If perhaps maybe we can get back to defining the scope and the scope of services to the detail, maybe we can have some level of interest that we can come before you next time around with more than just one proposal.
Glenn, can we schedule briefings with the commission?
Absolutely.
Before the end of this week, just so we can have those discussions?
I'm sorry, but I'd ask the question, which we haven't gotten to yet, is the $20 million within the range of expected cost of this project?
That I cannot answer, that's, I would have to defer to Public Works to see what was within the budget.
All right, the reason why I ask is because, you know, I normally, you know, I'm normally uncomfortable with a single bid, but if they came in at or below what we expected it to cost, then then it gives more credibility to the bid. And it also concerns me that it's taken a year and a half to resolve this matter. You say we engage in negotiations with AECOM, I mean, negotiations really mean trying to sharpen the pencil and bring the price down. So when you get back to us, I'd like to know what the range, what the expected cost was.
So Mayor, yeah, we, it was, it was within the range of what we had.
It was within the range, okay.
Well, then, my concern is something even greater along those lines, if that was within the range of what we were expecting, and that was 2023, my thought now is it's going to be astronomically more expensive because of our delay. I'd like to know, is someone here from Public Works that can address what we would expect with a delay of another year and a half since this bid came in?
And we do know that AECOM has guaranteed the prices.
Well, that's a factor then.
Just FYI.
Well, then, we definitely have to talk about it, because I want to know if we delay this, or if we open this up again, and we think we're going to get a different response than we already got, which I don't think we will get, what is that going to cost us?
Yeah, is that going to, is that going to jack up the price?
Well.
That's the question.
It's 2023.
We can, we can assume that, and there'd be a couple years of inflation.
Can I get an answer, can I get an answer to that?
If you don't mind, please.
Yeah, I'd like to know what we can expect as an increase from 2023 on this same scope.
Good afternoon, Abby Corom, interim Public Works Director. Certainly, the prices are going up over time, that's a fact that we're seeing across the board. One issue related to this, this is a design build, in the sense, we put out a design criteria package that is about 20% detailed as far as the scope, and design built, when you put it out with that limited scope in term of pinning down the scope, having a lot of competition in comparison with a 100% scope. So we've run into another project about six months ago, where we bid an electrical project, and there was not a whole lot of response, it was a design build. We went back and took the project from 20% design to 100%. So with that action, we got more concentration, we got more competition, you could hone in on the better pricing.
Well, if you had to guesstimate what you think what would happen if we rebid this, what do you think's going to happen to the price that we've been guaranteed?
It's hard, it's hard to gauge how how the market will be a year and a half from now, we've seen a lot of CAMs come through with, you know, prices coming beyond what the estimates are, the market is in flux, and it doesn't help a whole lot when you have a single bidder to gauge what the real market is.
Well, and especially since there's all this discussion of, you know, tariffs with countries that normally supply these products, I'm expecting we're going to have supply chain issues too. So, you know, what's being suggested is, do we take it now and hope for the best, or do we put it out there and and expect perhaps others will compete on the bid and will get a better price? But there was something else besides price that was mentioned by Glenn, and that was performance record of AECOM. Is that still an issue?
I think that there's some concerns, and those are ongoing concerns that we're in discussion with AECOM.
Okay, that was going to be my question regarding those, what's going on with the police headquarters, the conversations we're having now with AECOM, and we're discussing going to another contract with them. I'm uncomfortable with that. If we could talk about, you know, it's only one person, because it's one person, we're going to default to have the same practice before us again, we, are we being responsible? As as commissioners, are we being responsible to invite them back to this opportunity of the tune of at least $20 million, and then watch that price go up over each quarter that we're doing business? So someone can address that for us.
So Commissioner, when it comes to the rationale that we were providing for the rejection, it was of then the vendors or the firms' responsibility. Right now, the responsibility is to be desired. Obviously, we're trying to work with AECOM, not only with the police headquarters, but on other projects. We're seeing that there's some deficiencies in their work, we are concerned about it, and thus the reason why, we just felt that it was something that we needed to account for in making a decision to reject the the GTL Lowmeyer proposal.
What was the date of, was it an RFP or RFQ? What was it?
Commissioner, these are the dates, it was an RP. The RP was issued back on December 26, 2023. We went ahead and extended, like I said, there were four different addendums, addenda that was issued within approximately four months. The RFP then closed in, on May of, May 3 of 2024, and then we got the Evaluation Committee to convene on June 19 of 2024. Going back to what Commissioner Herbst was indicating, perhaps maybe there was some details that were lacking during the issuance of those four different addenda that perhaps maybe created some concerns within the supplier community. I can only just perhaps maybe look into that and and think that that was one of the reasons, but we've done some extensive research, and it hasn't allowed us to basically find any other reason but perhaps maybe the lack of detail in the specifications being the reason why we only just received the one proposal.
And why were those four addenda added to the RFP?
To add more clarity, to add more clarity, but obviously, I'm always concerned that if you have more than just three, perhaps, addendum that's being issued, that's somewhat of an indication that perhaps maybe something has gone wrong with the scope of workers specifications, which sometimes will lead suppliers to back off and not submit, because the level of comfort is just not there.
But why are we analyzing that now as opposed to before we issued the addenda?
So, no, we were, we did that back then, and that's why we continue to extend, because we wanted to give that level of perhaps maybe Q and A and comfort to receive more than just the one. So we did that level of effort back then, but we have to wind up owing it to ourselves to take a look at those addendums and then make corrections, and perhaps maybe look into what went wrong that that made suppliers feel uncomfortable throughout the entire process. So not, not that we're looking at it now, we looked at it back then, but it's an ongoing work in progress that we have to continue to develop the scope to where perhaps maybe we can further define the project to bring in some suppliers' interest in submitting proposals.
For my clarity, is we've only received the one?
Just the one.
Just the one, no other vendor has come forward?
No, that was only AECOM was the only one, and understanding that we were having some issues with responsibility with AECOM, we just felt very uncomfortable with what's going on with other other projects to award them a $20 million project. I think we we have a duty to ourselves to look into that and and further maybe explore reissuing and perhaps maybe just getting more than just AECOM's proposal to consider.
I have another question. This is just in in regards to this process and other projects, not just this one. When we put them out to bid and we're asking for those to come back and say they want to be a part of this process, what are those numbers looking like when, or do everyone know who's posting the bid?
Yeah, so if you're a registered supplier, and they select the same commodity codes, Commissioner, that we select, anyone who's registered under that commodity code will be notified electronically.
So they understand.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, where I'm going with this, with this process, how many pending working jobs does AECOM has with us now? How many projects are they working?
I think there's numerous ones, they're basically working on a task order basis for, I think, for park projects.
Could you give me a number when you say numerous? I don't, I don't want to put your foot to the fire, but I have this vision in my head where I'm thinking that other vendors are like, AECOM has got a lock on Fort Lauderdale, and they're not putting bids in.
Commissioner, if you can just give me a second?
Yes.
Can I just say something here?
Sure.
This is not really an agenda item, and I and I apologize for asking all these questions of you, and you're not, you weren't prepared to be responsive, you are planning to bring it up at the next meeting. Can we, we're not making a decision tonight, it was a question that the Commissioner Sorenson was just wanting an update on what was going on, and and I think, I'm wondering whether we should resume this conversation when we have it on the agenda, give you time to to get some answers for us. I hate for you to answer on the fly like this, because because it, you know, we're not going to get all the information we need. And if we have any questions ahead of the meeting, maybe we could submit them to Glenn. What do you think, Commissioner Sorenson? I mean, you brought this up.
Yep, that's fine, Mayor.
Does that make sense? Okay. Do you, do you mind?
I really want to just a ballpoint of how many vendors are, how many projects that AECOM is working with, and that'd be in the my question, if you can get that.
Okay.
While they're looking that up, Mayor, I want to take this opportunity to kind of touch on a tangent here, as we're talking about how price increases are going up and what delays are costing us. And I just want us to all be cognizant that that also applies to Lockhart. So as we look at what we're doing with Lockhart, let's just remember, delays are costing a lot of money, and let's make sure that we move that project along as quickly as possible as well.
So I would want to come back to the next commission meeting and give you a precise number. Right now, these are just approximates, commissioners, looking around roughly around six right now, six current projects to the tune of $35 million.
Okay, thank you. So why don't we resume this discussion when we have it on the agenda, and we'll be able to have more complete information, and I invite any of the commissioners who have additional questions to submit them ahead of time, so you're able to respond to us with more specific detail, okay?
Much appreciated, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sorenson, you can continue.
Thank you. I wrap up my my comments with, it was great having Navy Rear Admiral Perry, who's a Fort Lauderdale local, went to St. Thomas, is now the Chief of Information for the entire Navy, and have him here, and Mayor, thanks for hosting him at your office, and he's going to be coming back for Fleet Week, which will be amazing.
Last week of April, right?
Last week of April, yep. So, and he he grew up going to the Boys and Girls Club of Broward County facilities here, so that was really great, having him here. And speaking of Fleet Week, Susan, Fleet Week, the possibility for funding, where are we in that conversation?
So we shared the sponsorship package with the commission, I think, after the last meeting, and we were just looking for some direction, if that was, I think it was a $20,000 sponsorship, and we provided the list of what was included in that from the city's perspective.
Great, thank you. So, Mayor, can we see if we have support for that?
So let's talk, let's talk about that for a second. You know, during the boat show for years and You know, during the boat show for years and years, um, the city never really had, like, an event, okay? And then when we took office, we came up with this mayor's reception, and it really kicks off the event a big way, right? I think Fleet Week deserves a city event, right?
Agreed.
And maybe before we start sponsoring with dollar, just dollars, maybe we should actually use money like that and put on an event for these, these sailors, you know? Whether it be, whether it be enlisted, whether it be enlisted, whether it be, you know, uh, whoever we decide, you know, should be part of this. I know we can't have a party for 500 people, but we can certainly do something, right? And I think it befits us since we're now getting it back, so show our appreciation. Thank you for coming back to Fort Lauderdale. So maybe we can work with the Navy League and see if we can collaborate. Maybe we can, uh, ask you to do that, Commissioner?
Yeah, happy to, yeah, I'll work with JW and the whole team.
And see what we can come up with, some kind of opening party or something, all right? Okay.
Sure, I'll, I'll work on that and report back to you all.
Okay, great.
Yep, yeah, thank you. And that's it, Mayor, thanks.
Okay, very good. Uh, just a few things. Um, January 26th, I attended the, um, the Chabad La Solis, their Friendship Circle Judicial Luncheon. This is their 10th anniversary, is celebrating the, uh, the restaurant there, the Friendship Circle. Uh, about six judges attended. It was a very nice event, attended by quite a few people in the congregation. Um, let's see, uh, I participated in the grand opening of the annual State of the Workforce Breakfast and Job Fair. This was a job fair that was put on by Broward County, uh, excuse me, not Broward County, at the Broward County Convention Center, and, um, uh, it was a career source that, uh, that, um, created this, uh, this, uh, breakfast, and there were over 1,500 pe, job seekers who attended, and more than half of them found jobs right there on the spot. So, very pleased with that, and, uh, um, we're very thankful, uh, for Carol Hilton and, and her staff for the great work that she did in making that happen. Um, I want to repeat what Commissioner Beasley Pittman said about the FXC ACE Awards. What was really especially, um, great about that is, besides the great food, was, uh, the fact that people are recognized for their achievements and their commitment and their investment in our, in our city, um, and investment in, in infrastructure, investment in people, um, and investment in, you know, the well-being of our city and our communities. So I want to, I would just, it's really important. Thank you, um, Rufus, for, you know, pulling that event together and recognize people who are committed to us. Uh, the next day, I attended, along with Commissioner Sorenson, the investiture of Dr. Harry Moon, the new president of Nova Southeastern University. It's a really great event, a lot of pomp and circumstance, a lot of, uh, a lot of videos. Uh, Dr. Moon, who's been a, uh, a surgeon here in Fort Lauderdale for many, many years, uh, we got to know a lot about his past and, uh, his inventions of surgical techniques, so we're very blessed to have him in our community and also to be at the head of, uh, Nova Southeastern University. And some of us brave souls went to the Greek Festival and danced, and, uh, I saw, oh, yes.
I've seen the video.
Yeah, and a few of our staff were there. I saw, uh, Karen Warful, I saw, uh, Milos, I saw a lot of people there, it was really kind of fun. So, um, let's see. And then, uh, February 1st, I attend the Urban League 50th Anniversary. We're very, very blessed to have such a longstanding institution in our community and the great work that it does, uh, and, uh, this was their 50th anniversary here in Broward County, so, uh, our hats off to them and everything that they've been able to accomplish. Uh, so, uh, on February 6th, this Thursday, the History Makers of Fort Lauderdale will be recognizing individuals, uh, who have made history here in our city, and that's going to be at 6:00 PM at the Galleria Mall. That same, I'm sorry? Okay, that same evening is going to be the opening of this, of the sales office at the St. Regis, which is the Bahia Mark, uh, uh, area. Uh, that's at 6:30. Um, everyone's welcome to attend. It's a milestone that we've been able to achieve after many, many years of finally agreeing on what properly belongs at that site, and I want to thank the developers, the investors, and the community for coming together, and, and hopefully this will be a successful undertaking. Um, on February 11th, we're doing the groundbreaking of Urbania Flagler, uh, that's at 626 Northeast First Avenue. Um, very exciting project, and, uh, that's at 10:00 AM, again, February 11th. Uh, let's see, on February 12th, the, the development called Am Bell there on Northeast Third Avenue is having a panel discussion. I'll, I'll be on that panel regarding the state of the city. And then the next, that same day, that evening, the Winterfast Captain's Club presentation at 6:30, that'll be at the venue in Wilton Manners. Um, everyone's invited to attend, should be a great event. The 13th, we are recognizing the, uh, Jewish holiday of Tu Bushavat. This time it'll be a tree planting, this, and because we rotate the districts that this takes place in, uh, this year it'll be in District 1 at 4201 North Ocean Boulevard. Uh, again, that's at 2:00 PM, and, uh, looking forward to that. So annual tradition that we have resumed, uh, since COVID. Uh, the 13th is also Neighborhood Support Night. Where are we having Neighborhood Support Night?
In the City Hall Garage.
In the garage?
Yeah. The side that is closer to the building that we're in now, not the one closer to the old City Hall site.
Okay, so, um, that'll be at 5:30 PM. Again, Neighborhood Support Night, it's a great opportunity for the community to get the, meet and greet all the s, uh, staff and the departments and understand the types of work that we do. Any people have questions, certainly a welcome to bring them up at that time. Um, and February 15th, we're having the Fire Rescue Remembrance Ceremony, that's at 10:00 AM at the Fire and Safety Museum in, in Salvo Ben. Um, so, annual event, we always look forward to that happening, and, uh, again, that's February 15th at 10:00 AM. And then, of course, February 17th is President's Day. Um, it's a day off for a lot of people, but certainly a day for remen, for remembering the presence of the United States and, uh, and the work that they've contributed to our history. I have one matter that I'd like to bring up with the commission, and that is, um, the, as many of you know, there is a, uh, um, these, the Greater Fort Lauderdale Chamber of Commerce has a DC Fly-In, this is their annual summit, and they're looking for dates, and every date that they've chosen conflicts with one of our city commission meetings. So, um, we need to get some kind of consensus, if we could, to see if we might want to move one of the meetings so that, uh, we can accommodate the, uh, this event. Um, so you're going to ask me, well, what dates are you talking about? So it's going to be in September or October, so if any, if you have your calendars with you.
So I'll jump right in, Mayor?
Yeah.
You don't want to mess with the September ones, because that's our budget adoption?
That's our budget one, right. So they talked about moving the September 16th meeting to the 18th, so that would just be a two-day, uh, difference, and then in October, it'd be moving, um, uh, from the 7th to the 9th. One or the other?
I can't do the 9th.
You can't do the 9th?
October 9th, nope.
Okay, so the 16th to the 18th, is that going to interfere with our, our budget? You want to come up here and... Laura, what are your thoughts?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commission. Um, so we have to have a budget hearing, um, the 12th or later, and no later than the 15th, so we usually have to do a specially scheduled meeting anyway, um, because that's for our non-ad valorms, so we have to do one between the 12th and the 15th. Um, but we haven't figured out those dates because the county has to first tell us what dates the school board and the county are taking.
Well, between the 12th and the 15th, that's, that's a weekend.
Yeah, it's, we're not going to have many options this year. Um, it, it could be on Saturday, and it could be after 5:00.
15th is a Monday.
The 15th could, we could do it on the 15th, but you'll have to stay late with us and sign all the documents if we do it on the 15th, because we're required to get all of the non-ad valorms back to the revenue collector.
I vote the mayor stays late.
I second that.
That's not the point, because the first event is the 15th.
Oh, okay, so we, we will ha, we're required to, um, have a hearing between the 12th and the 15th?
The 12th makes sense, I'll stay late on the 12th.
12th is a Friday.
We could do the 12th, it has to be after 5:00 PM.
That's fine, I don't, I have no life, so.
Now you're cutting it to happy hour.
Yeah.
I don't think any res, look, we have enough trouble getting residents to show up for a budget hearing. You think you're going to get anybody on a Friday night at 5:30?
Well, we'll have happy hour.
Um, this is one of the, um, issues we're asking our lobbyists to try to help us with at a state level, but it's a state rule.
Again, I don't mind coming on the 12th, if you, folks don't mind coming on the 12th.
The 12th.
Yeah, yes.
Right now?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Because they, they, the chamber wants to know, because they need to program it.
So Laura, you said you could also do it on Monday, the 15th?
The 15th is there, is the, um, the first event at the, at the DC Summit, and that's...
Let's do it September 12th.
Yeah, I think the 12th would make sense, and if that's okay with everybody.
Yeah, um, that's what, um, David just confirmed that we need to confirm a location, but we'll, we'll confirm a location in partnership with the clerk's office, and we would just need to advertise it before the, um, trim notice goes out.
So is that going to take the place of the meeting on the, when is that, is that going to take the place of the meeting on the 9th, or just an additional meeting?
We typically do an additional meeting for the second budget hearing, but, um, if you all wanted to move the other meeting to that same date, I could defer to David on that.
We're meeting on Tuesday the 9th? No, we're meeting on the 2nd, right?
We're meeting on the 2nd.
The 2nd and the 16th.
We could move both if you want.
We're meeting on the 2nd, when's Labor Day?
The 1st is Labor Day.
Okay.
So then you're also still talking, Mayor, about moving the meeting from the 16th to the 18th, so that you can do the chamber, so we have to move that meeting as well?
So, we typically, the...
Oh, hang on, Laura, no, this is, this is more, this is more about our regular...
That is correct, that is correct.
So you want to take the regular meeting on the 16th and move it to the 18th? And you want to have the budget meeting on the 12th?
Yeah, which usually doesn't last that long, it's usually like an hour, right?
Actually, it just depends on how quickly you can read it.
When are the Ju...
I'll, I'll bone up on my English. When is the Jewish holiday?
I don't know, I'm asking, when are the Jewish holidays?
Rosh Hashanah begins on Monday at sundown.
Which Monday?
The 22nd.
That's Rosh Hashanah, so it's a late, it's a late holiday season.
Okay.
Okay.
That's it, you gotta ask the non-Jew what the Rosh Hashanah is.
Yeah, right? So, so the September meetings, the regular meetings, would have been scheduled for the 2nd and the 16th, so well before any of the holidays. Okay, all right, does that give you sufficient direction, Laura? Okay, everyone good with that? Okay, all right, um, so that concludes my remarks, and, uh...
Mayor, I had one other topic I want to bring up.
Yeah, go right ahead.
Um, so, a week from today, let's see, February 11th, we're meeting with Broward County Commission, right, 11:30 AM at their chambers, is that, am I tracking all that right?
That is correct. So let's talk about that.
And, yeah, please, so, number one, if, Susan, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is the top is, topic is exclusively the New River Crossing.
What we transmitted to them and asked for them was New River Crossing. I did ask them if we could add the extra, um, subject of homelessness, and they came back and said, you know, they're really committed to just doing the bridge tunnel debate, and that they thought that there might be some tweaks in 1365 coming up on the legislative session, and they wanted to wait to talk about homelessness until after that, and that's the feedback that we got. Ben Rogers and I met with the folks from the county, um, yesterday, just talking about what that agenda would look like, and I think we have a draft, um, as, and we would be sharing it with you as soon as we, we nailed that down with them.
I understand this is only an hour, by the way?
No, actually, so they...
So what are we looking at now?
A couple hours.
All right, because there's no way we've ever sat down with the county and finished luncheon less than an hour, let alone had a meeting with them.
So, so when we asked them about how much time we'd have, they, they said about a couple hours, because we are starting at 11:30.
Okay, so it's the maximum of two hours, it could take less, so you never know. All right, I, is, is there anything else you wanted to add?
Yeah, I just want to talk about that a little bit more.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks. So, okay, so what's on the draft agenda?
So, so Ben, you want to come up also, and we can talk about it? So it, it was going to start with the county mayor and our mayor making opening remarks.
Okay.
Um, and then short staff presentations that would talk about the last time we've done a joint meeting with them on this subject was, I think, December of '23, so what has transpired on each side during that year-plus timeframe? Um, and then we were, they were going to open it up to remarks from everyone else. Um, Ben, did I kind of summarize that correctly?
Okay, great, um, so who's going to be making our presentation?
Ben Rogers is going to be making our presentation.
Okay, great.
And they're, and it's, and they're brief, the staff presentations were going to be just a couple of slides.
Great.
Whoa, 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 whoa. You, you first said the mayors are going to make remarks.
Opening remarks, yes.
Okay, so the mayor of, of, this mayor is going to talk at length about everything, the BDO analysis, comparing it to this, you know, to the county's analysis and coming up with in great detail. Is that something that I should be doing, or that Ben should be doing? You just said he's going to be very brief. That analysis is not brief.
Ben, I, I think that the mayor can make all those remarks during his opening remarks.
Yeah, absolutely, Mayor, if you feel comfortable making those remarks, it's fine. One of the things that we are going to try to do is focus on commonalities between the bridge and the tunnel, um, and things that we can agree on, um, and try to, um, I don't say limit the discussion to that, but not to get into the minutia of, uh, this is one foot inside of right of way, or this is not, uh, technically feasible.
What are the commonalities between a bridge and a tunnel, other than getting the, the train across the river?
So that's the first one. Uh, you know, financing will be one, I think both of these projects are going to, we're leaning on federal funding, and with the change in administration, I think there's some questions about what federal dollars exist. Um, environmental considerations will be one, uh, traffic impacts, uh, would be one. So I think there's, you know, a handful of topics that both, um, both the bridge and the tunnel would, would have impacts outside of, um, the minutia of, does it fit in right of way, is it too, too, too deep, too sloped, too expensive, things like that.
Okay, we'll figure it out, okay. We're going to come up with a, with a slide, with a PowerPoint presentation.
Okay, great, so, yeah, Mayor, I don't think we need two people from the city presenting, so I think if you just did that, I think that'd be great.
All right.
Okay.
And, and Ben will be there to shore up any detailed, uh, questions that we have.
And, and I also requested that, uh, the, the BDO team, uh, attend the meeting, not to present to be, to be in the, the, uh, the audience for any questions.
Okay, great, great.
So, Mayor, what's, what would you like to come out of that meeting, um, in a week? What are your goals going ahead?
A unanimous decision that we go forward with the tunnel.
Okay.
Ultimately, that's the goal, but I know, I, and I invite all of you, and each of you, to, um, to meet with any or all of the county commissioners, to have any individual discussions, um, because a lot of the times, um, these, uh, these workshops don't always get to the, get to into as much detail as we need to get into in order to be able to fully understand the nuances of, of, let's take, for example, the price point, um, for the price point that we came up with, our analysis, BDO's analysis, uh, uh, and, and Myriam, uh, Meridium's, uh, analysis, and when they talk to us about maintenance and, and, uh, of, of what do we, what, how much would cost for, to maintain the, the tunnel? You know, these are things that, sometimes when you talk one-on-one, um, people feel more engaged in the subject than if they're in a large room with 25, 30 people. Um, it's easier to sink in your chair and, and to ignore what's going on. Uh, I think it's, I think, you know, I'm going to do my best to speak at least to two or three commissioners, I've spoken to almost all of them at one point or another in the past two years, but a lot of new information has come forward, and I think that, um, uh, you know, when BDO made their presentation to us, I'd like to share that with the county so that they understand the perspective that we're coming from. Um, I'm eager to hear their analysis, um, but in the, in the end, you know, we have to at least move closer to understanding what our, what our expectations are and what their expectations are. So far, all of I've, all I've heard is that they have no problem whatsoever with the tunnel, they just have a problem with the price, right? So we have to, we have to show how that gap is closed by a lot of the components that the bridge concept, uh, needs to take into consideration, and the fact that perhaps the bridge approach is not that much cheaper than the, than the tunnel, and that's, that is something that I'm going to try to emphasize.
Okay, great, makes sense. Are you comfortable, so in my discussions with county leaders, one of the concerns is the financing, the, the, the money, um, and so one of the expressed interests that they've shared with me is, would we be open as a city to try to, uh, suggest limits to to their contribution, which I'm personally open to that, that possibility, how do, how do you feel about that?
So this is the way I see it, it's interesting because, you know, I've heard a couple of, well, let's just say one county commissioner who said, well, the county will give $250 million towards the project because that's what we were going to give to the bridge, okay? Well, first of all, that's not a real number because they're not dealing with finals, final price, price components of the bridge concept, they haven't taken into consideration the underpass that would go at Broward Boulevard, they haven't taken into consideration the cost of building that, that fourth bridge, there's just a lot of components that, that they're not adding into the equation that has distorted their version of the discussion of the New River Crossing. So, $250 million is of, is not a real number because it doesn't represent the 50% that they thought they were going to contribute towards the construction of the bridge, it's actually would be much more. So, our position is also that the money from which they are drawing, that $250 million is not out of the general fund.
Right, it's surtax dollars.
It's out of the surtax.
Right.
Forty-five percent of that surtax money comes from Fort Lauderdale. So, since this is a project of regional significance, it behooves our leaders to consider that a significant amount of that surtax money should be spent in a, in a project such as this, it's going to affect not just our city, but multiple cities within the county, and since we're contributing 45%, the amount of money that is needed for this, for this project should be more than just a, a flat number that they think is based on their cost of the bridge, but it needs to be a real contribution to making this tunnel happen because it's in the best interest of the city of Fort Lauderdale. And so they need to be looking out for the best interests of the city of Fort Lauderdale, knowing that almost half of that money that goes into that surtax fund, much of which is still sitting there unspent, okay, should, should be directed towards a project such as this, and that would be one of the arguments I would like to make.
Okay, so, great, makes sense, I don't, I, I'm not sure what their receptivity to that would be, that question, that line, but.
I'm not sure what it is either.
I'm supportive of trying it.
Doesn't it make sense?
Sure, absolutely, so I'm all, I support that 100%, and I guess the, so, in addition to that, I think it would be helpful for us to be able to suggest if they counter or challenge, to be willing to find a, you know, a number that we think might be appropriate conceptually, because the numbers aren't going to be real, there's going to be a lot of different, you know, analyses done in the future and so forth, but I think if the goal of the meeting, as you said, is to get to an LPA agreement of a tunnel, then I think we may have to be, you know, continuing our, our flexibility in discussions around how we can get there together.
Right, so, so during the Biden administration, as many of you know, we, this, you know, we had been working aggressively and regularly with the, with the US Department of Transportation in lining up their interests to help fund this project, and they were ready to go.
Sure.
And now they're not there anymore.
Yep.
But the, but the program is still there, another two years, the program is still there, and we have, we, we have connections with this administration that can help facilitate our application for funding from the federal side, all right? So, so we haven't lost that connection, we're just different people involved, and so going forward, we, we can't even begin to have a conversation with the, with the federal folks until we have consensus here at the local level, right?
Agreed.
We know that, so we need to get to that point before we can even think about federal funding, and, and I think that there is, there is a path to getting there, and hopefully we'll be able to come to that conclusion next, next Tuesday.
Agreed, and that's where I just encourage us as much as possible to be flexible to get to the LPA. If we don't get the LPA, it's going to be very challenging to moving forward.
So let me give you an example, Commissioner. So in their analysis, in their analysis, they've proposed having to build four bridges, one which is a temporary bridge.
Right.
But it's still a full bridge, you know, you gotta build it and then tear it down again, all right? So, in, in their initial analysis, along with the Florida Department of Transportation, the cost for the, for the, for the original bridge design was $450 million. Now they have to build two additional bridges, which were different than the original, and they're still coming in at $450 million, so I don't understand that at all, number one. Number two, there is, there's a, there's a understanding that all those additional trains are going to be a nightmare for crossing over Broward Boulevard, because the bridge is supposed to begin at the, at the southern side of Broward Boulevard.
Correct.
So there'll be dozens and dozens of more trains every day that are going to cross Broward Boulevard, so we are now collaborating with the MPO to do a study, to see what it would cost to do an underpass at Broward Boulevard at the train tracks, okay? There are some estimates out there, I don't know what that number is, but someone said maybe $150 million, okay?
Which the MPO does not have funding for.
No, no.
Just to make a point, that would be further funding.
That's in addition to the, so this adds on to the cost of the bridge, so you add that, plus Broward Boulevard would have to be closed for approximately two years, right? So I don't know where 30,000 cars a day are going to go, but it would have to be closed for two years.
Not even possible.
Then, they also have to build another station, because the existing station has different security measures and, which are not adaptable to a commuter rail system, so closer to Sistrunk Boulevard, they would have to build a, I think it's a thousand-foot-long station, I believe it's a thousand-foot, I'm not sure exactly, but it's going to be a long station for the commuter rail, all right? So that's not figured into their analysis. So there are all of these component parts that are not figured into the analysis, especially since there's also going to be frustrated traffic at Sistrunk Boulevard, there's going to be frustrated traffic at Davie Boulevard, plus they're going to be basically covering over our historic district with a bridge, and they're going to block truck, truck traffic at Himarche, no trucks will be able to pass through there anymore because the bridge will be so low, only very low-profile vehicles can go under there. So those are the kinds of things that have to be discussed, have to be factored in, and have to be priced out, and so that's the kind of conversation I hope we can have.
Agreed, no, agree, a couple other factors just want to add, this past couple weeks I've had very good conversations with FECR, FECR officials are also hoping that we can get alignment on the LPA for the, for the tunnel, and they are supportive of a tunnel a, as the locally preferred alternative, so there's support there for the tunnel, they're, you know, largely agnostic, but supportive of the tunnel.
Well, they know that the tunnel's construction will be the least obstruction to their, to their system.
Yep.
They're very concerned about the bridge interfering with the passageway of their freight trains.
Correct.
Whereas if you build a tunnel, it just goes underground, under the right of way, they're, they're good with that, as you know, and, and, you know, there would be no interference with the, with the freight. The other thing is, you know, there are, there are some long-term plans to move freight westward, and, and to be honest with you, I know that, you know, we need to start thinking about that going forward, you know, it won't be while I'm still on the commission and none of us will be on the commission at the time, but, but, you know, 30 years from now.
We'll be lucky to be alive at that point, Mayor, we've been talking about that for the better part of 40 years.
Yeah, so here we go again, so, but the point is that right now, I feel that if we build these tunnels, when we build these tunnels, we can build them to a diameter that will accommodate underground freight, because there are other cities where tunnels exist where freight does travel underground, and, and I, in my meetings with the US DOT folks in the last few years, they've indicated that there's no impediment to allowing freight to go underground.
Yeah, the concern I'm hearing from FECR is the, is a gradient, and when it's graded at too steep of a decline, the basically connecting devices between the cars can basically buckle and, and uncouple, so.
So.
Correct, if it is the right grade, then it's possible, the more gradual decline increases the length of a tunnel, but, but that's, that's the math.
But now you're talking like a four-mile-long tunnel in order to get these, these massive freight trains through there, or they're going to have to run a lot more freight trains through.
No.
Shorter freight trains, which they don't do, I used to have a lot of conversations with CSX, it's headquartered in Jacksonville, I know those folks, they don't want to run short trains, they want to run massively long trains because that's the most efficient way of moving that stuff, and that massively long train needs a long runway to go down and come up again, that little engine that could is not going down quickly and coming up, it's not going down at Broward or Sistrunk and, and coming out at Seventh Street.
Well, the thing is that it doesn't go down any deeper than a bridge goes higher, so if we're looking at, if we're looking at a bridge, they're saying 40 feet, but it's not 40 feet, it's 40 foot at the base, it's, and you have to build, you have to build the infrastructure, then the tracks, so you're looking at a 48-foot height.
No, I, I get that, I'm just saying, you're never going to get freight through a tunnel in a reasonable length that we're going to build for commuter rail, those are, those are two different tunnels that you're talking about.
All right, so we'll have, I don't, I don't know the answer to that, I'm not an engineer or designer, but those that are engineers and designers have told us that we can build the tunnels underground at a reasonable length that is not, that does not compromise the price point that we originally talked about, and all it would require is just digging a wider tunnel, which I believe is 26 feet or 28 feet, I forget the, the dimension, but, but it's between 22 feet for a regular tunnel and 28 feet for the double-stack freight, so, so, yeah, I'm learning all this stuff as we're going along, I, I should be an engineer on a train, so.
So, great, and again, you, you, you can run commuter rail and freight on the same line, just to be clear, the challenge is the incline and decline, and it has to be a sufficient decline and incline to properly carry freight.
A 4% gradient, a 4% gradient, yes.
So, and the bottom line with the conversations that I'm having with FECR, maybe you all are as well, is one, I just want to express my appreciation to them, this is their right of way, and they are saying they will be supportive of the direction we're going, so that's fantastic, that's an important part.
And I appreciate you having these conversations, thank you for doing that.
No, you're welcome, you all have been laying the groundwork.
Thank you.
The second important, I think, entity that at least I've been talking with is the Department of Transportation for the state, FDOT. Again, support and openness to where we're heading as a city, very interested and willing to be a partner in some form or fashion as we explore the tunnel, again, their, the FDOT's hope and desire is good alignment between the city and the county, without that alignment, that'll be difficult to, to move forward expeditiously, so another reason why this upcoming meeting, the more we can more closely align, I think the more effectively we can have FDOT as a great partner, just as they were for the Miami Tunnel, helped to really drive the Miami Tunnel, and, and that's the kind of big organizational support I think we need, so much gratitude and thanks to FDOT and FECR for where we're headed, Mayor, so I just want to give that update.
Commissioner, in that conversation with FDOT, did they indicate a willingness to increase their financial participation if it costs more? Because I haven't heard that out of FDOT yet, I, I've heard that they're more than willing to do either one, but there weren't, I haven't gotten any indication from anybody FDOT that I've talked to that they're willing to up their financial contribution, have you heard anything different?
So I've been focused on kind of walking before a run-in, so it's been first just, hey, let's talk about the tunnel versus bridge, are you open to the tunnel, we voted anew as a commission, and so they are very open to supporting that, and so I think the more we build that relationship and alignment, I think we're gonna, gonna be able to financially, you know, have some big wins, so, haven't gotten talking specifics with them yet, but, you know, it's a good point, and once we do, you know, I'm happy to share those conversations as we have them, but I think we're heading in a good direction, so, thank you, Mayor, I think that's it for the 11th, I just wanted to make sure we're all, you know, kind of talking before.
I'm glad you brought it up, thank you for bringing it up.
We get in there, thank you.
Thank you for bringing it up, and I also want to just mention one last thing before I finish my report, the, the 17th Judicial Circuit has elected a new chief judge, Carol Lisa Phillips, who is a former Mayor Nogal's wife, and I want to congratulate her, she's a great person, a great judge, and we wish her the best in her new position, so, acting city manager?
Yes, a couple reports, first, I'd like to congratulate our Office of Management and Budget, who once again has received the GFOA Distinguished Budget Award, so great job to all our budgeters.
They're the only ones that can find money where it didn't exist before.
And then also FXC, our own airport, has received the 2024 General Aviation Airport Safety Award for their Taxiway Hotel Echo Improvement Project, so great job to FXC.
Let's have another party, Rufus.
And Mayor, that's all I have.
That's it, okay, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, I do have a request for an executive closed-door session pursuant to Florida Statute Section 286.0118A, I'm seeking advice on the following matter, 625 Fusion LLC doing business as Red Door Asian Bistro at L versus the City of Fort Lauderdale and Robert Gonzalez, case number CACE19-CV-61308-RKA, during the city commission regular meeting of February 18th, 2025 at approximately 4:30 PM or as soon thereafter as may be heard. Present for that client attorney session will be Mayor Dean Trentalis, Vice Mayor, Commissioner Steve Glassman, Commissioner John C. Herbst, Commissioner Pamela Beasley-Pitman, Commissioner Ben Sorenson, Acting City Manager Susan Grant, interim city attorney Dwayne Spence, Assistant City Attorney Robert Oldershaw, outside counsel Hudson Gill, and certified court reporter from Bailey, Etienne Court Reporting. The estimated length of the session will be approximately 20 minutes.
Okay, is there any further business of the commission? They're being done, the meeting's adjourned, thank you.